Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the September 26th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpetian.
Here.
Flag salute is led by Councilmember Sinanian.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our nation. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. During his sermon in 1960 titled "The Three Dimensions of a Complete Life," the great American civil rights leader Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. reminded his congregation that somewhere along the way, we must learn that there is nothing greater than to do something for others. Tonight, as so many talk about how players in the National Football League took a knee or did not during the playing of our national anthem, let us pause and remember the poor people of Puerto Rico who were on both knees in the wake of Hurricane Maria without power, food, or water and praying for assistance. Let us pray for our fellow Americans who have been ignored and seek our charity and help. And this evening, as his council deliberates, let us remember the words of Reverend King, that we must remember that nothing is greater than doing something for others. Let us set aside the differences we have over the political issues that divide us and pray for those suffering who need shelter, clothing, food, and water. Let us pray for their deliverance from this tragedy. We pray for peace. Our hearts are with Puerto Rico. Oramos por la paz y nuestros corazones están con Puerto Rico. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Cazacan. May I please have your report?
The agenda for the September 26, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, September 22, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next?
Next is a presentation and appointments. 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 3, 2017.
Ms. Beers?
Mayor Garpetian, members of the City Council for October 3. For the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. We do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council to commence at 3:00 PM. This is Chief of Fire, Fire Chief, Disaster Management and Preparation. And this is a presentation and a study session on that. That evening for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of items under consent. Director of Public Works, removal and replacement of City Hall front entry steps. Director of Public Works, roofing replacement and restoration at City Hall and General Services Buildings. Director of Community Development, this is an award of $175,000 contract for property acquisition and property management. Under action items, we have Chief of Police and interim Chief Information Officer. This is regarding a purchase of police air support communications and equipment for the cities of Glendale and Burbank. This is a joint air support unit for helicopters. City Clerk, California Voter Participation Rights Act and future of Glendale Municipal Election Administration. And lastly, we have City Manager. This is a consideration and discussion of establishing protocols for translation services at City Council meetings. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. What's next, please?
Before I move on to the next item, I do want to mention that there was a posting for a special public meeting for public employment position titled City Manager, Closed Session. That has been canceled. That was scheduled for tomorrow. The goal-setting posting was done on time, however, and that will move forward. However, the timing of that has moved from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and that will occur at the Brand Library Recital Studio. Next item is 3B, proclamation designating October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay. Do we have a speaker on this item? I think Ms. Linda Burns would like to say a few words.
Good evening. How are you all?
Doing well, thank you.
We're very happy to see you wearing the purple ribbons. Thank you so very much. I'm Linda Burns, and I've been on the commission for a while. And I want to thank Mayor Garpetian and City Council for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It is through awareness, recognition, and discussion that more men, women, and children are able to step forward and end domestic violence. Glendale has great community involvement, and it is through the coordination of the City Council, Glendale Police Department, the YWCA, regional partners, and the CSW that Glendale is able to serve its residents when they encounter such violence. In Glendale, the number of domestic violence disturbances last year were slightly higher than they were the year before. The key to reducing these rates is prevention and education. More residents are reporting domestic violence disturbances, not allowing for it to escalate into domestic violence, and inviting the police department to interview with resources early on. The Commission on the Status of Women looks forward to continued open discussion with the partners and opportunities to raise awareness about domestic violence. Together, we can break the silence and the cycle to end domestic violence. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioner for being with me this evening, Elena Sirmajin. Hello. This is the new commissioner, and I believe, who appointed you?
Councilwoman Agajanian.
Oh, there you are. Here she is. She's a lovely girl. At this time, I'd like to introduce Tara Peterson, the Executive Director of the YWCA of Glendale, to come to the podium. The YWCA is commissioner's community partner and Glendale's key domestic violence service provider. And Tara is here to share some important information. I think we can sit down.
Hi. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. It's my second time here, my second Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. And so on October 5, we'll be hosting our annual candlelight vigil with the Commission on Status of Women. And this year is going to be a very inspiring, moving event, and we really hope the community to come out and be a part of it. There's flyers in the back, so folks can grab those. We'll be honoring Charles Lazarato, a Glendale police officer who was killed 20 years ago while he was responding to domestic violence call. His friends and family will be with us to share a few words, along with a member of the Glendale Police Department who worked alongside him. We're also going to be honoring a young woman. Her name was Meredith Dixon. She was 24 years old, and she was murdered last year in a murder homicide by her boyfriend in Hollywood. And we're going to be celebrating her life. Her family got together and dedicated a fund to the YWCA Glendale and raised over $5,000 that went directly to our programs to help the women, men, and children that we serve. The YWCA Glendale last year served over 2,900 people through our domestic violence programs. We received over 980 calls to our crisis hotline. And what we're most excited about, in addition to being a safety net for the city of Glendale, is that we were just recently awarded a $225,000 grant from Van Nuys Charities over the next three years to focus specifically on prevention. And that's really figuring out, how do we stop from being downstream and taking bodies out of the river, but what do we need to go upstream to find out why are the bodies getting thrown in the river? And that's what we want to do. We want to begin to shift our focus on prevention. And so we're really excited about this partnership to raise awareness about domestic violence and really begin to think about what is it going to take as a community to prevent and ultimately end domestic violence. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So I do have a proclamation for you. I think this is a very important issue in our community and every community, and I want to thank you for everything you do, raising awareness and prevention, as you mentioned, I think is very important. So with that, I want to read the proclamation, and I will have my good colleague, Council Member Devine, to present it to you. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects over 4 million Americans of all races, ages, gender, and income level each year. And whereas one of our four women will experience domestic violence in her lifetime. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And boys who witness domestic violence are twice as likely to abuse their own partners and children when they become adults. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, and inflicts untold emotional trauma to the entire family. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, I, Vartan Garpetian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge citizens of Glendale to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Thank you. Thank you. And before I give the proclamation proudly, I just want to say, Commissioner Burns, the word that you used in your statement was, one of the words was silence. And I think we have to let everyone out there know that if you see something, say something. Silence. Women are many times embarrassed, afraid to report, but if you see someone having a problem at home, say something. Call 242-4155 and get help. Get them help. We just recently had a murder-suicide in our city, domestic violence-related. And so we know that the problem is here, and we have to deal with it. So I hope that everyone's listening to your message. I hope a lot of the women that are out there and men will come to the vigil on, what is it, October the 5. And having had my start on the Commission of the Status of Women, I'm proud to present the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Want to add something? Something nice. What's next, please?
Next is a proclamation at 3C designating Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month.
Okay. We do have a proclamation. Is anybody here to receive the proclamation or?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, my name is Juan Gonzalez. I'm the project manager for the Be Street Smart Glendale Campaign and the Safe Routes to School Program. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing our community partners in these efforts with regards to safe routes to school. Allow me to introduce Pat Hines, the Executive Director of Safe Moves, our Safe Routes to School vendor, and Dr. Renee Valdez, the new Director of Student Support Services at Glendale Unified School District.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I just wanted to tell you that Glendale is certainly becoming the gold mark in the state of California with the true partnership between the community, the school district, law enforcement, and all the city agencies. We're becoming a city that walks, rides, and rolls. And I use this as an example throughout my travels. I had the opportunity of meeting with the governor a week ago, and he said, what's the best city that you think that is example of the Safe Routes to School program? And it is truly the city of Glendale. So we're very happy that our upcoming October 4 will be another successful Walk to School Day. We had 7,800 kids walking last year. We're shooting for 9,000 this year. And it's through the partnerships with the school district that this program's going to be truly successful. With that note, I'd like to introduce my partner in crime here and with the school district.
Ditto. Is that it? No. Yeah, I'm going to keep it short. I know about long meetings, so we're excited about this event. We've been participating in it for five years now, and, you know, it's great for our kids. Our principals are ready to go. The kids are excited. I know some of you have kids in the district, so I look forward to seeing you guys out there. And just thank you again.
We have a one-minute video, which I think would be really helpful for the audience to see how incredible the event truly is. So if you can roll the video.
Glendale Walktober is just around the corner, and you know what that means. It's time to get walking. As part of this City of Glendale Safe Routes to School Program, all schools are invited to participate in the 21st Annual International Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 4. Join this global event as communities from over 40 countries unite in walking and biking to school on the same day. Why should Glendale residents support walking and biking to school? It's fun. It promotes physical activities that help prevent serious health issues. It promotes safety. It provides a cleaner environment. And finally, it's a win-win for everyone. Walking and bicycling to school reduces traffic congestion, boosts a sense of community, and improves neighborhood connections. For more information on participating in International Walk to School Day, contact the city's Safe Routes to School partner, Safe Moves, at 818-786-4614.
Our goal is to have every day look like that, all kids walking so there's less traffic. I also want to let you know, the stop sign costume, any of the city council who'd like to wear that on the day of the Walk to School Day, we can make that available. Thank you very much for your time.
Please don't go away. I just want to say that this event has become a community event. It became a community event that brings all the parents together, all the children together. You don't often have the opportunity to get together with the parents of the children that they go to the same school with, your children, to get together and talk and get to know who they are. I mean, it's a rare opportunity for us parents to get to know each other as well, because our kids go to the same school and they're in the same class. And walking, of course, it's a great thing for the children, and it brings, it's a fun parent, it's a fun community event, so I wanted to mention that. And I have a proclamation for you, and I want to read the proclamation, and then I will have Mr. Agajanian, Councilmember Agajanian, to present it to you. It reads, whereas all people of Glendale are pedestrians, and pedestrians, as pedestrians, we have a right to safe streets in our communities. And whereas the city of Glendale is taking an active role in improving pedestrian safety and reducing pedestrian-related collisions through its public education, community outreach, and safe routes to school programs. And whereas the Be Street Smart Glendale Educational Encouragement Campaign is the city of Glendale's effort to make cities' streets safe for all road users, pedestrians, motorists, and bicyclists. And whereas pedestrians will have to the highest priority in urban design, transportation, planning, and construction. And whereas the city is continuously implementing safety improvements and initiating enforcement operations to enhance pedestrian safety citywide. And whereas the people of Glendale experience the joys of walking as a source of transportation, health, fitness, and recreation. And whereas there are many beautiful destinations to walk and enjoy throughout the city. And whereas parents, educators, community members, and leaders can support Safe Routes to School programs, which enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school in October to evaluate walking conditions in their communities. And now, therefore, I, Vartan Garpetian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Walktober, Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of all our citizens this month and throughout the year. And I will come for air and ask for Mr. Agajanian to present the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while they're taking pictures, I just want to say that this is a great educational opportunity for the children. They learn how to walk safely, cross the street safely. It's not just a fun time, although it is, but it's very educational, and it's very good for the kids and the parents as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, all this year, like all the other years, I'll be walking to Mark Keppel and Toll Middle School with my kids. I still don't understand why we do it only once a year. Again, this is just such a necessity, and we need to instill the culture of walking in our kids from early on. So we'll see you out there. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, before we go to the next item, I do have some proclamation. As we know, this Saturday is the 90th anniversary celebration of the Glendale Community College. And I don't know if the awardees are here or the recipients of the awards are here tonight or not. Are they here?
Angie Dickinson?
There are three, yes. Chip Stone, the Bistain family, and Angie Dickinson. They are not here, so we do have, we do have a proclamation, a commendation, that we will send it to the event, so we will present this to them. I just want to announce that for the community, it's on September 30, 6:00 PM, a silent auction, and 7:30 dinner live auction at the Glendale Community College. What is next, please?
Next is the consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Is there a motion to move the items, or is there a?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay. Comments. So Najarian?
Well, I do want to thank staff with regard to the consent calendar for taking the extra time to go through it with us and preemptively answer any of our questions. So that was, I know it took a little bit of extra time, but I think in the end, that certainly pays off. Not much to say. I returned from my short trip to Armenia where there was a diaspora in conference. It was very well attended by many individuals and organizations from Glendale. It was, like Glendale had moved to Yerevan. It was really unbelievable. But it was a very interesting and productive trip, more so than coming out with any strong and actionable policy. I think it was a good opportunity for a lot of international networking to occur. Everybody, obviously, everybody knows Glendale. It seems like every month, one of the council members and mayor is there, and they're, you know, they're quite familiar with Glendale as being the preeminent city for Armenians outside of Yerevan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Agajanian. Councilmember Sinanian?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last Saturday, we had a plane crash in Glendale, and it's truly a miracle that it resulted in no casualties, as far as I know. The two pilots, one of them just literally walked away and was standing there for a couple hours before he was let go. And then the other one was hospitalized, but only at the insistence of the medical professionals, there was nothing wrong with him. But 15 feet in the wrong direction, it would have landed on an apartment building, so we're very blessed. I have to say that our police and fire are very professional, had cordoned off the area. I'm sure the appropriate investigation took place late at night with NTSB and FAA checking out what the reasoning was. But by morning, by Sunday morning, there was absolutely no trace of any accident having ever happened on Allen Street, right by Glenox. Very, very strange, almost surreal. So we were talking about the sort of the Glendale-Armenia relationship, which is notorious at this point for obvious reasons, but last year, the consulate general of the Republic of Armenia, which is one of the two consulates located in the city of Glendale, the other one being the Dominican Republic, celebrated the 26th anniversary of the Armenian Republic. And virtually every elected official, with the exception of our colleague, our Najarian, who was actually in Armenia, was there. And it was a good event with a great turnout. Also, on that same note, we, no, actually, that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sinanian. Councilmember Devine?
I just wanted to report that I attended the home tour that the Glendale Historic Society carried on on Sunday. It was a tour of five craftsman-style homes that were built between 1902 and 1915. That's probably before any of us were born. I took the tour, and it just reminded me or gave me a feeling of why we are working so hard to preserve our these craftsman homes. These homes are absolutely extraordinary, and the people that live in them, the residents, are taking such good care of them and spending valuable money to restore them. It was quite an amazing morning, and next year, when you see these tours going on, you should maybe take part, because you see a lot of Glendale that is really, really special on these tours. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine. Councilmember Agajanian?
I just want to read from official news release of Glendale Police Department. As you guys may know, on the evening of August 8, 2017, Haït Sun O was shot and murdered inside the garage of her condominium apartment building located in the 2,900 block of Montrose Avenue. And for a long time, myself waiting for this press release in order to announce it. But however, the investigation lead to the arrest of those two suspects who were identified as 20-year-old James Wesley Trotter of Los Angeles and 22-year-old Yousin James of Los Angeles and another person, of course. They all are gang members. They followed Ms. Haït Sun O from Lynnwood. They were hanging around her business and followed her to her house in Montrose. And for only a few hundred dollars, she had $600 in her purse, and she got killed. And these, I don't know if you guys can see from here, these are the pictures of suspects, which they are in custody and there is, with no bail. I'm glad they catch them, of course, for the family. So sad that they lost her working mother. So that's only, I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. I'm going to be short. I attended the LA County's mayor's meeting yesterday, and I want to ask Mr. Choa and the staff to maybe reach out to them and see if you can host one of these events in Glendale, because if it's in our city, every council member can attend those meetings. And they are very educational and very effective. There are so many things going on out there that us as a team, we need to wrap our brain around it and get our hands around it to get our fair share of the local return, you know, from Measure M, which is- know, from Measure M, which is $120 billion within first 30 years, first 40 years. $23 billion of that is going back to local communities. And I want to tell the public that this council is very involved and very active in different aspects, and you have some sort of a powerhouse here, because Mr. Najarian being on Metro and MetroLink and San Fernando Valley COG, Mr. Senarian being on Eco Rapid Transit Airport Commission and MWD, which is a very important commission, Ms. Devine being on Arroyo Verdugo COG, which is newly formed, and we will have really a say, a seat at the table as to how we're going to approach or demand our fair share of the local return, and being on the Airport Commission, and also being on the SCAG, and many different boards, but I'm just mentioning a few of them, and Councilmember Agajanian being on Eco Rapid Transit, and soon hopefully will join the Contract Cities Association and represent Glendale on that board as well. We are, and myself, you know, on SCAG and different boards, Airport, Transportation Commissions, we are here to serve the community. We are doing everything we can to bring our fair share to Glendale, so we can use those dollars to improve the quality of life in Glendale. I think hosting one of these events will really serve that purpose. And there was a talk about the Olympics for 2028, and I got to tell you, Eric Garcetti did a, it was just a miracle that he could pull that off and bring the Olympics to Southern California, to LA. And what they're trying to do right now is, Olympics has five rings, you shall know, and every city is trying to become a part of that ring. And for us, I think this is the time to seriously, seriously look into having, maybe going back to the option or the idea of having a stadium, a small-sized stadium in Glendale that will serve that purpose, and for generations to come, they can use that facility somewhere that is not going to affect the residents, somewhere that is easily accessible, somewhere that is close to the freeway, so it won't create a traffic jam. But I think we need to look into how can we participate in providing some services to Olympic Committee, because there's preliminary rounds that they use different smaller facilities for Olympic 2028. So with that... If you're done? Yes, I am done.
Thank you. Just since you mentioned Metropolitan Water District, at last Tuesday's meeting, our colleague, Aron Najarian, wasn't here, but this board unanimously voted to support the California water fix. And since then, the Westlands Water District has voted not to support the water fix. And just in case our residents are wondering, while are we going to commit to something more than the 26% that was mentioned so many times during our two-hour deliberation on last Tuesday, I want to reassure everyone that the vote that's going to take place on October 10th is still limited to our 26% share. That's what we're voting on. That's my mandate from this city council, and therefore from the city of Glendale, is to vote only on the 26%. If the 26% passes, but the other districts don't come around, they don't support it, this project will not move forward. But we're not going to commit ourselves to anything more than that. Just wanted to reassure everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian.
One last comment. I know we've gone a while, but Mr. Senanian brought up the plane crash, and apparently the initial investigation reveals the cause of the crash to be jet fuel exhaustion, which means they ran out of gas. So next time you're late for work, don't tell your boss that you ran out of gas. Tell him you suffered from motor fuel exhaustion.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. One last thing, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mr. Hago Badassarian. And I have a brief memo of him that I would like to read after, at the end of the meeting. What is next, please?
Next is community event announcements. This is a three-minute portion. We also have a three-minute general public comments at this moment.
I have five cards. First speaker is Christina Astyan.
Good evening, Mayor Karabetian, honorable council members. My name is Dr. Christina Astyan, and I'm the chair for the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry's Walk of Life 2017. Our nonprofit organization, also known as ABMDR, was founded in 1999 and operates worldwide to ensure patients in need of a bone marrow stem cell transplant have a chance of finding one and thus surviving leukemia and other blood-related illnesses. Only 25% of patients matches with a relative for a transplant, so we're targeting the 75% who need an unrelated donor. Since our inception, we have over 29,000 donors in our registry from 30 countries over four continents. We've identified over 4,000 patients and facilitated 30 bone marrow transplants. Our 12th annual Walkathon aims to raise funds and public awareness of ABMDR's mission to mobilize the community of the greater Los Angeles area to support the registry by signing up as donors, making contributions, and volunteering. The 5K Walk is on Saturday, October 7, starting at 8:30 in the morning. It begins and concludes at Glendale City Hall Plaza, 633 East Broadway Avenue, where we will celebrate with music, food, and festivities. We invite all members of the community and the council members to take part in this fun event. And we actually brought a clip, if you don't mind showing that, please. Thank you.
My wife would walk with our baby every day. They both loved it. But leukemia stopped my wife from doing the thing they loved. Now, my daughter and I are going to walk for my wife to support the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, find a match, so that my little girl grows up with her mom.
Please join us on October 7.
Together, we can save lives.
So I understand from the meeting that we're promoting Walk and we're promoting health, and so I would invite all of you guys to come. It's going to be a great event on October 7, and thank you for your time and support.
Where does the Walk begin? Where are you gathering?
633 East Broadway Avenue. Just almost here in the plaza.
Last year, you did it at Memorial.
Actually, last year was the first year we moved the Walk to the plaza over here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick question, and this question has been answered umpteenth times, but maybe you can do it one more time. Why the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry? I mean, why Armenian? Why is that ethnicity being separated? I know there's a medical reason for it, so I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, there is. So Armenians, other cultures too, but Armenians in particular, because we don't intermarry as much as other nationalities do, so our genotype is particularly unique, and so that's why it's hard to find a bone marrow match. And so that's why we are under, we do work under the National Bone Marrow Donor Registry, but back in 1999, when Dr. Frida Jordan founded the organization, she realized that a lot of Armenian patients or patients with Armenian descent had a hard time matching with the National Registry. And so we work under them, but we're the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry.
Thank you.
But Armenians donated to Italians and others?
Oh, yes, exactly, exactly. But at the end of the day, we are a worldwide organization, and so we've had situations where we've had a donor here who's Armenian match with a patient of a non-Armenian descent in a foreign country, just because of our vast outreach to other countries.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Next speaker is Margarita Badassarian. Followed by Dr. Rafi Balyan.
Good evening, council members. I would like to say I have participated in this Walk, and I would really encourage everybody here to also participate. My name is Margarita. I am the Community Outreach Director of the Armenian National Committee's Glendale Chapter. And I'm here today on behalf of the ANCA Glendale Chairman and Board to express our organization's support of the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center at the proposed location in downtown Glendale. I'm not sure if you've seen it, but earlier today, Glendale's official Facebook page published a short video which discussed the state of the city in 2017 and many of its achievements. And I was very proud when I was watching this video, but I kind of had a sense that there was something missing. A cultural and educational center, a place where community members and tourists could visit for cultural and educational enrichment, a place that reflects the rich and diverse heritage of the city of Glendale. The Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center, when built, would be such a place, filling in the much-needed missing piece. Our city, and especially our Arts and Culture, Arts and Entertainment District, needs a facility that will serve to enrich the community with literary, visual, and performing arts, not only from the city, but also from around the world. A place that will bring all kinds of people together and a place that will be a spot for tourists who are eager to visit. It seems almost unnecessary to mention that students from GUSD and GCC would also greatly benefit from having a world-class museum in their backyard. Our organization and the community are eagerly waiting for the start and completion of this project, and I wanted to emphasize that unlike businesses, apartment buildings, and hotels, this museum will add significantly to the quality of life in Glendale and in turn will benefit the surrounding business sector. We look forward to seeing this project come to life, and I would like to let you know that ANCA Glendale is willing to assist the city with anything they need to achieve this vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rafi Balyan?
Good evening, honorable mayor, honorable councilman. My name is Dr. Rafi Balyan. I am the chairman for the Armenian Rights Council of America. Our organization has served, City of Glendale has dedicated itself to the betterment of the city of Glendale for over 40 years. I'm here today to publicly communicate to you our organization's full support, unconditional support, to the construction and promotion of the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center in Glendale. We believe this will be a landmark for cultural and educational highlights, where diversity will be highlighted, the ethnic diversity will be well-presented, and that is something that we'll be proud of. Glendale has seen a lot of construction lately, in past decade. We're seeing a lot of apartments, complexes being raised, and we believe a cultural, educational, art center will be in line with the growth of Glendale. This will serve the purpose of making Glendale a better place, and it will be a world-class center for culture and educational institution. I'm here to support this project, and you can count on our organization's full support in making this major project come true. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next speaker is Christina Agajanian.
Good evening, Mayor Karabetian, and members of the Glendale City Council. I'm here on behalf of the Armenian Council of America to speak in favor of the proposed Armenian American Museum. In this political climate of divisiveness, bigotry, and ignorance, it's vital now, more than ever, to celebrate multiculturalism and the contributions made by immigrant communities who make up the very fabric of the city. Aside from the financial aspect of establishing this museum in a metropolitan, business-oriented space with heavy foot traffic, the museum will put Glendale on the map as a beacon of tolerance, where multiculturalism is celebrated and diversity is embraced with a growing appreciation and understanding of people of different ethnic, religious, socioeconomic, and cultural backgrounds. Glendale was chosen as a proposed location for the site of the museum to highlight the many contributions of Armenian Americans to the city dating back to the 1940s and 50s. This world-class museum in Glendale at the proposed site is something we can all be proud of for many generations. It will not only educate the public, but it will also honor immigrants who left their homes overseas in search of a better life, establishing their roots here, and contributing to the progress and growth of this vibrant city and this great nation of immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is, I'm going to take a shot at this, Ayman Rahnema.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members. My name is Ayman Rahnema. Thank you very much for pronouncing it correctly. I'd like to go over something. I know there are already ordinances in place in terms of opening marijuana shops in Glendale. We actually have a business on brand, and what we do, we actually bring clients from all over the US and Canada to Glendale, and basically they come in, they spend a few days with us, and they bring their families in. And I had two instances that they came and complained because there's a little bit of smell, and it actually is affecting our business. And I've actually smelled it myself. It's a major situation. And the reason I bring this to you guys, my parents live in Westwood, which is in Los Angeles and Santa Monica. There are pretty much pot shops everywhere. It has significantly increased crime and a lot of homelessness in our area. I don't know if that's a proven statistic for you guys or not, but I like to really have you guys look at that and take it seriously. It's affecting our business, and also, like, I've had a few of my friends in Colorado who had manufacturing businesses that significantly affected their business. So it really increases crime, and also, it's interesting that, you know, October being Violence Awareness Month, because I personally believe that drugs are directly affecting violence. And also, it was interesting that we saw that video with kids. You know, I feel like if you guys want to really look at that, look at that video with kids being safely running around in the street, look at that before, you know, reconsider in changing anything. Again, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. That was the last card. What's next, please?
Mr. Mayor, I see Harith Sosunian in the audience. Just want to say happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mr. ... We are not going to sing, but happy birthday, Mr. Sosunian. What's next, Mr. Kasakhian?
Under action items, ADA is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Water Master Services. ADA 1 is motion authorizing to execute agreement with Richard C. Slade and Associates LLC for a term of three years and not exceed amount of $1,721,500, with the option to extend for two additional three-year periods. 2 is a motion authorizing to execute agreement with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, Crescent Valley Water District, and Cities of Burbank and San Fernando.
Thank you. Mr. Chou?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Zern comes forward, this basically is a reflection of the adjudication of water rights in the upper Los Angeles River area that is shared by and among the agencies that were written to the record by Mr. Kasakhian, the City of Glendale, Burbank, San Fernando, Crescent Valley Water District, and LA DWP. Because we have what's known as a Water Master, and that's a real term, that actually oversees this adjudication, that work that's done by the Water Master is effectuated by a consultant that is selected by the ULLARAC Committee, the Upper Los Angeles River Area Committee. The committee periodically bids out this work, as you would expect. That RFP process was conducted. The successful bid, based on the RFP contained in your packet, was for Richard Slade, continuation of their work. The City of Glendale's share of that overall contract is about 12%, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zern, so what we would do is recommend to you that we would continue on under that adjudicated arrangement with the other water agencies for our share, being that 12% amount. But if you have any specific questions, certainly Mr. Zern can answer those for you.
Mr. Zern, would you like to make a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to follow up, that was very comprehensive. That 12% translates into about $69,000 per year. The reason you have the full contract in front of you is that there is a division of labor amongst those agencies that make up the ULLARAC Committee. Glendale's duty is to manage the Water Master contract, and each of the other agencies do different things to contribute. So that's why you see that large number of 1.7 million. But 69% of that is accessible to the City of Los Angeles and LA DWP, which is about 1.2 million. Glendale's about $69,000 a year for the Water Master. There's also a court-mandated separate legal counsel that he must retain, and that costs us another about approximately $9,000 a year. And as I had mentioned in some of our briefings, Mr. Slade, he had the previous nine-year contract, was very, is very judicious in his expenditures. So his last year, this last contract that he's in now, we're estimating about 70% expenditure of what was bid and budgeted, and that's pretty consistent with what he does every year. So we've been very, very happy, not only with his work, the court's extremely happy with his work, the judge likes him quite a bit, but he's also done us well in not only managing the stipulated judgment that was issued in '79, but also doing it in a very managing the stipulated judgment that was issued in '79, but also doing it in a very economic manner. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Well, tell someone who doesn't like him, Mr. Zern. People who don't like him are the attorneys that he doesn't hire to pad his bill after reviewing that. He certainly has been under budget in his expenses, his administration expenses, and we know how easy it is to run up bills with attorneys, present company excluded.
Absolutely.
So I like him. I mean, that much, I really like the way he runs a tight ship, so.
And I appreciate those comments, Mr. Zern.
I appreciate that.
And as you can imagine, to get the consensus of all those groups, including the one big gorilla that's in that group, is not easy, but Mr. Slade certainly can coalesce that entire group and has done a great job.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Check. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Agahtanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Under hearings at 9A is Director of Community Development regarding appeal of tentative parcel map number GLN 1631 located at 2116 Rimcrest Drive. This was continued from August 29. And 9A1 is a motion reversing Planning Commission decision of denial and approving tentative parcel map number GLN 1631 based on findings. 9A2 is a motion sustaining Planning Commission decision denying tentative parcel map number GLN 1631, continuing the matter to October 10, 2017, without further public notice, and directing City Attorney to prepare written findings in support of denial.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak on this item, please fill out your cards. I have about ten of them, but if you haven't filled out the card, just please fill out the speaker card. So after we close the public hearing, I don't wanna get more cards and more cards and more cards. I wanna have all of the cards in the beginning while the staff is presenting this case. And I'm going to open the public hearing now, and we'll close the public hearing after the motion is made before we take a vote. So with that, floor is all yours. Do we have the presentation?
Yes.
I do.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Bradley Collin, Senior Planner in Community Development. I'm the case planner for the subject case that's before you for 2116 Rimcrest Drive. I'm gonna do sort of a combination presentation PowerPoint at the same time. The hearing is for an appeal to City Council of a December 7, 2016, decision by the Planning Commission to deny a parcel map for request to subdivide one residential lot with an average current slope that exceeds 30% into three residential lots and develop a single-family dwelling on each of the two vacant lots. The property is zoned R1R, which is a restricted residential zone. The site is generally bounded by Aspen Oak on the south and Rimcrest Drive on the east. The site has slightly less than 100,000 square feet, contains one single-family residence which will remain. The proposed lot areas would vary from 29,000 to about 35,000 square feet. The lot in question was created through a series of subdivisions resulting in a large lot located at 2116 Rimcrest, which fronts on Aspen Oak. Tentative tract map 3118, which was approved in August 1975, included three lots on Aspen Oak and a public park. Tentative parcel map GLN 1335A was approved in July 1979. This included elimination of lots fronting on Aspen Oak and moved the park site. Parcel map GLN 1589, approved in April of 1991, eliminated the park site. The two new lots slope up approximately 100 feet from Aspen Oak Lane to the north side. The code requires the average lot to be 30,000 square feet. Proposed project complies with this. In addition, the project, in addition, sorry, proposed lot areas must not be less than the average lot area within 500 feet of the property. In this case, the average lot area would be 22,000 square feet. Again, the project complies with this requirement. The existing single-family residents on Rimcrest Drive will remain and is accessed off of Rimcrest. The new lots would have access off of Aspen Oak. This is a view looking from the south. You can see that these are the houses on the south side of Aspen Oak, and the subject property is basically along where this mouse is, and this is the existing house at 2116 Rimcrest Drive. So this would be approximately Lot 2, approximately Lot 3. This is an overlay showing the proposed lot boundary lines in conjunction with an aerial photo, and this shows what it would look like on Lot 1 as viewed from the south side of Aspen Oak. Lot 2 as viewed from Aspen Oak. And Lot 3. What I'm gonna show you now are conceptual models that the architect has put together. These are just to show that houses could be built on the two lots. This is not necessarily what's going out there, but it's something that's possible. So what I'm showing you now is one view of Lot 2's proposed house, another view, this will be Lot 3, and another view, and then the two lots together with both Lot 2 on the right and Lot 3 on the left. In terms of the history for the property, on December 23, 2010, tentative parcel map application GLN 1628 was submitted. On June 6, 2012, the Planning Commission approved the subject parcel map and adopted the negative declaration, PEIF 2010-013. On June 18, 2012, an appeal was filed by the neighbor. October 30, 2012, the City Council overturned the Planning Commission's approval, denying the parcel map GLN 1628. On October 24, 2014, tentative parcel map GLN 1631 was submitted, worth reduction and overall grading. December 7, 2016, the Planning Commission denied parcel map GLN 1631. And December 15, 2016, the applicant appealed the Planning Commission's decision. The Planning Commission had two main reasons the staff saw for their denial, first being the due to the steepness of Lot 3 and the fact that the house on Lot 3 does not comply with the hillside design guidelines by not following the slope or the lot being built into the hillside. Second, they believed that the project would not be consistent with the city's general plan land use element. The appellant's basis for the appeal, their main argument focuses on the fact that the subject parcel map complies with all the required regulations in the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, general plan, and the hillside design guidelines. Staff's response to that is the staff believes that the subject parcel map application is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, the general plan, as well as the hillside design guidelines. The general plan land use designation for the subject site is low-density residential. The subject parcel map application is consistent with this due to the creation of two new single-family lots. Construction-related impacts will be regulated and monitored by our Building and Safety Division. Hillside design guidelines will be evaluated by our Design Review Board. As a point of clarification, this is an application for a subdivision of land, not building or design approval nor grading approval. The proposed homes are located, or would be located, at the bottom of the hills, minimizing the amount of grading necessary for development. The applicant is proposing to use colors and textures that blend with the natural hillside. The applicant is proposing to use retaining walls to reduce the grading, and the height of the retaining walls located directly behind the homes will not exceed 15 feet, and the remaining walls will not exceed five feet. The maximum number of retaining walls is limited to three walls in succession, and this complies with the zoning ordinance as well as the hillside design guidelines. The proposed buildings will be three-story and 32 feet high from the low point where it comes out of the ground to the high point on the roof. For Lot 2, we're looking at 31 feet 8 inches.
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
I'm sorry?
Would you repeat that again for Lot 1?
Sorry. Looks like the height for Lot 3 got chopped, but both of them will meet code and will be less than 32 feet high. Code allows for 32 feet with a flat roof, 35 feet with a pitch roof if the pitch is at least 312.
Thank you.
Now, it should be noted, too, that an argument can be made to not follow the subdivision or allow the subdivision due to its given history. The way the lot was created can be construed for it to remain as open space. However, under today's code, staff believes the proposed subdivision complies with the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and staff believes that the house can be built on the lots and comply with the hillside design guidelines. At this point, staff is recommending that the City Council reverse the Planning Commission's decision and approve the parcel map 16321. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from staff? Okay. Maybe, I don't know, no, maybe not from staff, but the maps, I mean, the drawings, I mean, that provided, maybe I ask him, so. The drawings which has been provided specifically showing what, how many rooms, how many bathrooms this building will consist of. This is provided by the applicant?
Those are conceptual plans. The project still has to go before the Design Review Board, so there may be a lot of changes potentially in the layout of where the rooms are, whether bedrooms on the first floor versus the second floor, as well as the massing of the home. It's definitely something the Board of, I'm sorry, the Design Review Board would be reviewing as part of their review, in addition to making sure that the houses comply with the hillside design guidelines.
Okay, so these drawings means nothing, then? The layout of the floor?
It's conceptual drawings, basically to show that they can build a house there on those lots with the slope and be able to meet the code requirements.
Okay.
The zoning code requirement.
So we are not talking about what is in here, we're just saying, talking about the division of this property?
That's correct.
So these drawings at this time means nothing?
They're useful to see what it is the applicant is thinking about doing, and it gives the council an idea.
All right, thanks.
Question, but.
Counselor Devine.
But in, am I correct that the ordinance says the council shall use hillside design guidelines in making decisions on changing of a parcel map?
The council can definitely, in their review, include that, but staff would like to reiterate that these lots are able to have houses on them that would comply with the hillside design guidelines, in our opinion.
Did you, excuse me, did you say the height will be 32 feet?
32 feet is the maximum height for a flat roof in an R1R zone.
In three levels?
Three levels if you have an average current slope of more than 40% within the footprint, and they have that.
And how high the building will be in relation to the street?
A good question for the architect, and I believe the architect also has some drawings for the council to show a section of the street and the houses.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. This is the last call to submit your card if you'd like to speak, because from here on, when I go to the public, I will not accept any more cards. If you have any, if you'd like to speak, please submit your cards at this time. So on the appellant's side, how many people are going to speak on the appellant's side? Sorry? Three people? I'm going to give you 20 minutes total, so I'm going to start with, who are the three people? I don't have a card from you, Mr. -- Yes. Right, I'm gonna call the, I wanna know which order do you wanna go to? The attorney speaks first?
We're gonna have the architect in presentation.
Okay. So, Mr.? I will give you rebuttal time at the end, but right now, Mr. Zorabians, right?
So if I hear correctly, Mr. Zorabians and Mr. Boniadi will speak in their presentation in chief, and then Mr. Gaines will speak on rebuttal.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Zorabians, floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Hamlet Zorabians, and I'm the project architect. And for the record, my address is 3467 Ocean View Boulevard, Suite B, Glendale, California. Since I have very limited time, I'm only going to speak about how the project basically is in conformity to the hillside guidelines. And also, I should say that within hillside guidelines, which is separated into two sections, one is dealing with the building itself, which is dealt in DRB hearing, and then there is a portion there which deals with the subdivision. And subdivision requirements are a little bit different than the Design Review Board proceedings. So since I don't have enough time, and it's very much limited, I'd rather speak, I'd rather read my statement.
Mr. Zorabians, between you and Mr. Boniadi, you have 20 minutes.
Yes, yeah, so I'm gonna take half of that time, and then I'll leave the half for Mr. Boniadi if I can. And so, so since I have very limited time, I'm gonna, instead of speaking, I'm gonna actually read my statement so I can cover all the points. So as you are aware, this proposal is for subdivision only. If approved, then each home will require Design Review Board approval to ensure compatibility. Therefore, we need to demonstrate that a single-family house can be adequately and safely developed on each of the proposed lots. The design details and features, the style and architecture, is the preview of the Design Review Board at a later hearing. Now, this project has been reviewed vigorously by the planning department for at least four different separate occasions, and each occasion, it was recommended by the staff for approval. Now, nevertheless, after the project was approved and then appealed in 2012, we revised the plans according to the neighborhood comments and concerns that we received at that hearing. And then we made certain changes to the plans themselves, incorporating all the comments and answering the concerns, and so when then, obviously after that, we have resubmitted the plans. Now, I'm gonna go over the changes. The changes that we made included the following. One, both homes were redesigned to include three-story instead of two-story, which was presented back then in 2012. This change reduced the building footprint, and as a result, it reduced required grading by 30%. Two, both house locations were adjusted so that the proposed driveways will not line up with the driveways across the street to improve privacy and drainage. Three, building foot area, floor area was reduced approximately 700 square feet from its original 5,250 to 4,500 square feet for each home in our proposal. The proposed visible retaining walls lengths were reduced from a total of 445 feet combined for two projects, total of it. Five, all these changes resulted in grading reduction as well as a 27% less soil expert. We agree with the planning staff report and findings, and also, and recommendation, and as far as even the conditions that are listed there, that the proposed project will meet the requirements of the hillside guidelines as follows, and I'm gonna go over some of the bullet points to make the case. Number one, proposed homes are located at the bottom of the hill, as you heard already, to preserve the hillside and minimize grading, which is consistent with the hillside development review policy A and B, A and D. development review policy A and B, A and D. Further, according to the submitted grading plans, proposed subdivision will include landform grading or contoured grading. According to our grading plans, every effort has been implemented to minimize grading and where grading is necessary to create natural appearance landforms, landforms, natural appearing landforms. Grading will provide for, for variable stiffness and, and the undulating slope face, faces to resemble natural terrain. So we've taken into very much consideration the slope itself, that it goes sometimes in different directions, so we have designed the, the retaining walls in our grading plan not to have just a straight retaining wall, but it goes undulating with the, with the slope that there is there, existing. So we will preserve or repair and maintain all existing drainage devices that there is existing there right now. New concrete drainage gutters behind the proposed retaining walls will divert the rainwater to drains and catch basins to the existing drainage system. Two, we propose to use textures and colors to blend with natural hillside, which is consistent with HDR, hillside design guidelines, policy B and E. Number three, we have incorporated retaining walls to nestle the home, homes into the slopes. All retaining walls, whether exposed or not, are all designed in accordance with the parameters set by the hillside ordinances. This is consistent with hillside design guidelines and HDR policy C. Four, both buildings are articulated with variety, varying planes and modulations just to demonstrate that that can be done. Obviously, this is a preview of the design review board in the future. And terraces that reflect topography and slope, which is consistent with HDR policy B and E. Point five, proposed driveways are placed at the level leading to the three-car garage, garages to minimize grading. Proposed driveway slopes meet zoning standards and are placed in such a way that they are not directly facing the windows across the street or existing driveways. Both garages are fully integrated within the overall structure. Garage doors are oriented away from the street, which is consistent with HDR policy A and E. Point six, proposed homes will occupy only ten percent of the, of the lot area, only ten percent. Majority of, majority portion of the lot area would remain as ungraded open space. As a result, the proposed homes will not have any impact on natural sunlight, because naturally they're gonna have much more open space between the houses. Buildings are designed to optimize passive and active solar heating and cooling, which is consistent with HDR policy A, B, C, A, B, and C. Point seven, we have minimized the use of retaining walls and proposed decorative materials such as natural stone clad to blend into the landscaping. Further, proposed five-feet-wide planting strip when its landscape will minimize the visual impact of the retaining walls, which is consistent with HDR policy D. Point eight, proposed landscaping will reflect native plants that are fire resistant and drought tolerant. So, again, these, all these details and all the specifications will be dealt with during the DRB hearing if this project is moving forward. Existing sycamore trees at the front of the property will be maintained except for a few of them that, that, that need to be removed for the driveway entry, which is consistent with HDR policy F. And finally, based on the geotechnical investigation reports and planting, and planning, sorry, planning staff findings, both sides are physically suitable for the proposed developments. There are, there are also, physically, there are many projects in Glendale that have been designed, approved, and constructed on a steep slope, which I have list of them here, just to give you a couple of the addresses that have been approved and recently, twenty-four twenty-five Cascadia Drive, six sixty Bolick Road, and thirty-four thirty-one Linda Vista. So these are certain projects, these are single-family houses that have been built, approved, and built on a steep slope. Now, also, I have, unfortunately, I don't have it prepared for PowerPoint, but I do have a handout if I can, if you can please, and it's, I think to make it easier, I made five copies of that.
Mr. Katsakhin, how much time do they have left?
Approximately eleven minutes.
And I'm done. I'm just gonna bring up the one point, and that's it.
No, it's okay. As much as you want.
That's why I read it, so I don't spend so much of time. What this is, I have actually drawn two sections, as you can see, two sections, which, which is taken from the proposed building, proposed house, and going all the way down and through the existing neighboring house down slope. And, and as is demonstrated there, I put down a line of sight, you can clearly see that, that the existing pool deck of the neighbors will not be visible in any way from the new house. That's what I've tried to demonstrate in these two sections. And then, also, I have a montage of the two proposed locations for the building as they might appear, and again, please don't pay attention to the details, this is very conceptual, but what they're, what, what it is, it demonstrates how we're gonna be maintaining the trees, and this is just a montage of the existing buildings there, the neighboring buildings, and also the proposed buildings within the site. And I like to just make, make a statement that I will be available for any questions from, from the council, but at the same time, I'm gonna invite Mr. Boniadi to come in and then.
Let him finish the presentation. Yeah, let's finish your presentation, then go through the speakers, and at the end, if you have questions, we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Mr. Boniadi, rose yours.
Honorable Mayor Karpetian, council members, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present my project. My name is Rick Boniadi. For the record, I reside at two-one-one-six Rimcrest. My wife and I have been residents of our great city for the past thirty years. I bought the property after checking all the rules and confirming that it meets all the requirements for three parcel maps. The previous owners had started subdivision with another architectural firm and had the lot lines already established. I had the homes designed to fit the neighborhood where I live and to minimize grading and preserve the hillside. I made sure that there were no variances, no conditional use permits, no exceptions, and no deviation from any rules or requirements. I also made sure that both homes complied with zoning ordinances, the general plan, and the hillside design guidelines, and the subdivision map act. After the first denial, I further reduced the grading and the lot disturbance. The floor area ratio of each property is way below what the standard would be for that area. I do understand the frustration of my neighbors, and I will do everything possible to compromise with them and meet their needs. After this approval, we will still need to go through design review board, and I plan to share my ideas, plans, and landscaping design with my neighbors to reach a compromise that complies with city codes as well. We will also have dust and disturbance to a minimum per strict city code and requirements. Ladies and gentlemen, these homes are not for millenniums. They are for families to live and to raise kids and attend our schools. These two properties will become homes to families just like yours and mine. Being in real estate, I see firsthand the effect of shortage of homes in our area. The state now mandates you to allow garages to be converted to actual units. Two years ago, we couldn't have even dreamed of such a mandate. Times change, so do the needs of the housing. This subdivision provides the opportunity to, for two families to live in a great neighborhood in our great city. My wife and I hope that our daughters will occupy them and stay residents of this great city. Mayor Karpetian, council members, we meet all city requirements and hillside design guidelines. More importantly, we have the right to be treated fairly and to have the law applied to our case regardless of who shouts the loudest or brings out the most bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boniadi. Now, I'm going to the rest of the speakers, two minutes each, please, Mr. City Clerk. Kurt Nelson is the next speaker, followed by Steve Eskandarian, followed by Charles Santos.
Mayor and councilpeople, my name is Kurt Nelson. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the Glendale Highlands homeowners, because my company built their homes. The project that you have before you tonight, if it was considered in a vacuum, is a good project. I was a developer for twenty-five years, but the, but the staff report and the presentation by the applicant misses the point. Nothing about this project has changed in any material fashion from that which was turned down here five years ago, or the one that was denied by the planning commission. The problem is that you have to consider this in the context of the commitments that were made to the people who live in Glendale Highlands, and how this came to be. The staff report talks about how within the parcel map that brought this parcel into being was created, well, they, it was to be a park site. No. What happened was, you have to look at the history of the tract. It was turned down in nineteen seventy-four. There was a SEQA lawsuit filed. It was reconsidered in nineteen seventy-five by the city council, and it was approved subject to numerous conditions of approval to address environmental concerns and, and address view concerns, because it's such a conspicuous site from down below. I know this because my company purchased the entire tract, including parcel thirteen fifty-five map, including the applicant's parcel, in about nineteen eighty-four. We built the DeSise home, they will speak to you shortly. We did our homework, and we looked, among other things, at the CCNRs that were encumber, encumber all of the lots, including the applicant's, and we looked into whether we, we might be able to subdivide this parcel, and we were told no. There was a real good reason we were told no, and when we, and I'll get to that in a moment, when the DeSise came to us to build their house, they bought a lot, and we built a custom home for them, and they paid a premium.
Mr. Nelson, your time is up, if you can wrap it up.
I have four cards worth of assigned.
Excuse me?
I am, I have been, I am carrying the ball for three of the homeowners who are not comfortable publicly speaking. I was told they could assign.
Did they submit a card?
They did.
Okay, can you tell me your names, please?
We wanted to submit two, but we're told that we can't do that here. So we want to go on there here.
Okay, we can't go back. How many people are yielding to this gentleman, Mr. Kurt?
Four.
Can you tell me the names?
Steve Eskandarian.
Okay.
Dickron.
Okay.
Not me, not me.
I have two, and who else?
You should have Elena, there's Elena.
I don't need more than that, I promise.
Okay, so I'll give you another five minutes.
For three speakers' worth?
Wait, we have three speakers.
Well, who is the third one? I have two here.
Steve Eskandarian.
And Dickron, and who else?
Yeah, and Fred, what's her last name, Fred Zerukian.
I don't have a card from him.
And I would just add, for, for the record, Mr. Mayor, this is your hearing, so you can decide how much time to allow to the speaker.
I would still like to speak, you have, so I'm not, you leave Mike.
Okay, then your time is up, and I can give you only three more minutes, because...
Hey, Mike, Tanya, Monta.
Okay. Okay, if you wanna yield, I'm gonna say this for the last time, if you'd like to yield to this gentleman, I would ask, I would allow one more person, Tanya?
Yes.
Okay. And that's it.
All right. I'll talk fast. You got another history of the tract. They came, the developer came back in nineteen seventy-eight and said, we made a little mistake. We're a quarter of a million cubic yards of dirt long, two-hundred-and-forty thousand, to be exact, and they were shut, they could not proceed, because they couldn't comply with the conditions of approval that were laid down to comply with SEQA and to address the concerns of the community, to balance the grading on site. Therefore, we were told that that could not be further subdivided, because I'm going to, if you wanna have it, I'll leave it with you. I wanted to make sure that my recollections were accurate, so under the public records procedures, I had the city clerk find all of the various hearings before the Glendale City Council from nineteen seventy-five forward to nineteen eighty-one. When we sold the DeSise their home, they asked us, we asked the city, I remember it was Gerald Jamriska, who was the planning director at that time, we were told, no, that is open space, and it will remain open space. Went back and looked at the record, and the written record of this council hearing showed that when they came up with this two-hundred-and-forty thousand cubic yards long, and then they did, then they were shut down again for grading violations, they were told, you're gonna lose five lots, you're going to solve this problem, we will let you create these huge fill slopes with the parcels in parcel map thirteen fifty-five A. They will take access to normal-sized houses for this development off of Rimcrest Drive. The rest will be heavily planted, irrigated, drainage devices installed. We told the DeSise that. They went to the city and they asked the same question before they purchased their premium lot, and they were told the same thing. So that's how these lots came into being. The, the, the thing is, sure you can build houses on them, of course you can. The question is, and you, as attorney, I'm sure will tell you, as this, but you have the discretion to allow this subdivision, but the subdivision violates the fulfillment of conditions of approval that allowed this development to be in existence in the first place. I had to start the homeowners association, I sat on the board with the initial members. CCNRs had been laid down, which included prohibitions against further subdivision of any of these lots, alteration of the finished grade, any changes, any more grading. Those CCNRs encumber this parcel, they did then and they do now. If he did his homework, I feel sorry, he didn't check the CCNRs. If this is approved, the neighbors have a great lawsuit, they shouldn't have to bring it, they really shouldn't, because this lot was never intended to be subdivided. This is not a NIMBY situation, and this is not a developer who did his homework, I'm sure he did, he sounds like a nice man. I don't feel good particularly about this, but I sold the DeSise their home, and I know what I was told and what they were told. I feel a little better for him because he bought this house, this whole property, in a short sale for one-point-six million, it's probably worth close to twice that today. This is not about bringing housing to Glendale, and I think that the neighbors here deserve your consideration. If you have any doubt of what I've said to be true, I can leave, I've made five copies of the various things that I found in your council hearing, but your staff will confirm This is one of those places where it, it simply isn't a case of NIMBYism, it's a case of doing the right thing. Thank you for your contribution.
Next speaker is, can I, excuse me, Mr. Nelson, can you introduce yourself again?
Yeah, sure. My name is Kurt Nelson, I'm speaking on behalf of the Glendale Highlands Association, the DeSise, the Eskandarians, and I'm simply here because I was there in the eighties, and I built their homes, and they called me when this happened five years ago, and I was here five years ago, and I thought...
But you're a member of association?
No, no, sir, I, I am not a member, I'm a, I'm a real estate broker, I was a developer for twenty-five years, and my company that I was a partner in built this community in the eighties.
But you are not associated with this?
I am, no, I, no, I was asked by them to come here and speak on their behalf. Yes, thank you so much.
Next speaker is Dickron Eskandarian, followed by Charles Santos.
Hello, Mayor, thank you, good to be here. Ardaşes, how are you? A good friend of mine, good to see you. Just let me know when my time starts, because I have my notes.
Your time starts now, you have two minutes.
So, the LA City Council passed a law, the McMansion Law, in nine, in two thousand and sixteen, we believe that this is a violation of that. I wrote my notes here, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm assuming Glendale should follow precedent because... I'm not a lawyer, but I'm assuming Glendale should follow precedent, because LA City Council passed that law. And 2116 Rimcrest does not meet the criteria to allow building these residents that he wants to build, because it is definitely more than 30% of his lot. He talked about 30, that it's not, but it's 80, 90% of his space. The empty space they talked to you guys about is just dirt on an extreme slope. So that does not count as space in terms of the McMansion Law. So it is an illegal development, based on the McMansion Law the Los Angeles City Council passed in 2016. My second point, it's unethical, because it could reside, result in mudslides, death. All of us lived there. I live at 114. February 18, 2017, four people died in major flooding in the hills. And there's nothing in his environmental report or anything that tells us that it's safe, what he's doing, tearing into that hill that he's trying to do. And the third reason is peace and tranquility. A lot of people that bought the houses on this never imagined that he's going to come and build a house right across the street, not even in our backyard, on our front yard. And there's a lot of people that are very against this, and they couldn't even be here. One guy has Alzheimer's, I don't want to say his name, for his privacy and other neighbors, but they really, really don't want this and the peace and tranquility of our neighborhood to be destroyed. There's a lot of hummingbirds in that area. It's called costas hummingbird in that whole area, and birds and animals, and he's going to destroy that entire habitat, just to build these three homes. Number four, do unto others, right? We're all capitalists. I'm a dad, too. I want to build on my house, too. But this is not that. This is something completely different. So for me, it violates that.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
So thank you. I urge the council to say no.
Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. Next speaker is Charles Santos, followed by Jack Tutunjian.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Charles Santos. I'm a planning consultant, and speaking on behalf of numerous neighbors on Aspen Oak Lane who are in opposition to the project. This project was before the city council in 2012, and they denied this project. Before it got here, it was at Planning Commission in 2012. It was approved, to the neighbor's surprise, they didn't expect a subdivision to be proposed on the steep slope north of their properties. The Planning Commission didn't have all the facts. It wasn't until they appealed, and it showed up to city council in 2012, that they brought up the history of the subdivision of this, this area, which has started in 1979 up until today. It's been subdivided two times. When it first started, the developer had over 240,000 cubic yards of excess dirt. So what they decided to do was to make three large parcels, Mr. Benyades is one of them, two more to the north, and they filled the slope up to 120 feet high to accommodate that extra dirt. They said there will be no development here. It will be open space. It will be irrigated, no sidewalks, no future development. There was a park site that was supposed to be there. That park site was moved to a different location. Eventually, the city decided the park site would be underutilized, too expensive to maintain. They sold the park. So this property is essentially the open space that should have been left up there. And just because you have the right to apply for a subdivision, it's not by right. It's a discretionary approval. You have the discretionary, the discretion to approve or deny the project. The city council in 2012, after they heard the facts of the history of the property, they denied the project. The applicant appealed it and went to, reapplied back to Planning Commission. Planning Commission also, after seeing the facts of the project, upheld the city council's decision, and they denied it as well. He's appealing this. You guys have denied it many times. You should look at the history. It's on page four and five of the staff report. It's very detailed, and it's all there.
Thank you. Jack Tutunjian, followed by Besim Artirozian.
Hi, councilman. Good evening. My name is Hago Tutunjian, Jack Tutunjian, and I live in 2120 Rimcrest Drive, which is neighbor of Rick. And my land, it goes, you know, parallel to his land, which is, you know, he wants to build it, you know, the houses. First of all, you know, I can say, if somebody complained, it should be me, because it's from my land, you know, it's, you can see the houses. But I'm very happy, because why? I built it, my house, and I know how much improvement I did, how much cleanup I did. All that, you know, California fireproof, you know, bushes, you know, I clean up and I make it, you know, garden. Same thing, you know, I know, you know, he's going to do it over there. And we're talking about the birds and stuff, you know. When I came, you know, that land, you know, it was, you know, like, just for the street guys, you know, coming and smoking and throwing, you know, bottles, emptied bottles. Now it's cleared up, everything, and, you know, you can see every morning, you know, all the birds and coming, and it's a beautiful garden. And I know, you know, he's going to do same thing. He's going to clean up, you know, over there, and it's going to be beautiful. Second thing, you know, I want to say, you know, I know I don't have too much time. I'm proud, you know, from my neighbors, and I'm proud, you know, from my, across the street neighbors. Why they are complaining about across the street, it's going to be a house, but this is a neighborhood, neighborhood, you know, watch. We watch each other. We watch each other back, you know, and we call each other. We have a network, you know, right away we see something, you know, we calling. And from my house, I can see what kind of cars it's standing there. You know, it's, young guys, they come and smoke and whatever, you know, and that thing is going to be ended right there. Thank you very much. I hope you're going to approve this project.
Thank you.
Did you say you live on Aspen Oak? I'm sorry, I didn't get your address.
Right above. 2120 Rimcrest.
Up on the, okay, not Aspen Oak.
Yeah, my, my, my land, it goes parallel to his land, you know. Yeah, so it's, I can see, you know, it's...
Thank you. Next speaker is Besim Artirozian, followed by Armin Avedyan. I did that once already. We usually don't do that. I accommodated this gentleman. Sorry?
Everyone has been assigned two minutes, but...
I think everybody's gotten two minutes.
Everybody's getting two minutes. I have so many speaker cards.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
I really think that it is inappropriate to have someone to build a house in a place where it was denied on multiple occasions. I really don't feel comfortable waking up in the morning and seeing absolutely different landscape to the one that I see right now. It's really difficult for me to accept any houses in front of my house, and I would like to wake up and to enjoy my life the way I used to do all my life. I, I think it's inappropriate, really, to build a house. I don't know the rules and the regulations, but I think it was nature, and it should be as it is.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for being here. Next speaker is Armin Avedyan, followed by Dr. Niles Desai. I hope I'm pronouncing that last name right.
Good evening, Honorable City Council, and Mr. Ochoa. It's a pleasure to see five people sitting here that I've personally voted for, so that's really pleasant. Anyway, my name is Armin Avedyan. I'm a past president of the Glendale Association and a Realtor of the Year, but that is completely irrelevant here. I'm speaking as a 36-year resident of Glendale. I own four properties, so I have a tremendous vesting in our city. My daughter goes to Glendale Community College, so I am totally, totally committed to this city and its future. When our governor issues a mandate allowing the auxiliary unit, units, developments, dwellings in our city, where you can actually take a garage away and build a residence in its place and rent it out, it's so, so much against our city policies of parking. Here's a person trying to develop pieces of land, complies with every rule and regulation, zoning regulations, height restrictions, parking restrictions, setback restrictions. Those trees will remain in place, so that, you know, you don't affect in any way the look of that city. I so much resent people who have absolutely no vesting in this city. It sounds like sour grapes. He was developing multiple units, and suddenly he couldn't anymore in the 70s and 80s. Gosh, progress. In 70s and 80s, the city of Glendale was so different from what it is today. It's funny, again, that people across the street are complaining that they don't want any more developments. What if the, the lots and the houses that they're living in today, they were not developed at the time? They would not have a place. At some point, somebody says, "Yes, those lots are livable, buildable." So now the neighbors are living there. Now they're reaping the benefits of that past decision for them to live there. Now they're saying, "Nobody else can build here." That is absolutely selfish. It is logical. Everything complies by the rules and regulations.
Your time is up, Mr. Avedyan.
And I highly recommend you, please consider a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker is Dr. Niles Desai.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and thank you all the councilmen and councilwoman. My name is Dr. Niles Desai. I live on 132 Aspen Oak. The house that you see with the, with the solar panels.
Okay.
This project is going to be right across from my house. When I bought that lot, with the full understanding that there will be no houses built across, I've been living there since 1984. We bought the land in 1982 and started construction. At that time, the applicant's lot was available. We inquired with city, that will you allow to subdivide? And they said, "Absolutely no." And Kurt went through the history. There was large amount of dirt being exported. City had arms up in their air, and they say, "No. You fill those lots, and there will be no more development." There is a covenant. When he bought his house, there is a covenant that there will be no change in the grading, there is no change in landscaping. Only way city allowed or penciled in that parcel to his lot, so that it can be maintained, irrigated, and even the plantation were up to be approved by the city. Second, if you allow this, what's next? There are two more lots possible up there. You're going to start dividing everybody's backyard into multiple lots? This is greed. This is not need, but it's pure greed. For one person's benefit, why would you allow all the rest of us suffer? Please stand up, all the residents and the neighbors. Please stand up and say no to this project. This is ridiculous. We don't want to keep coming back here every five years or every four years and litigate the same situation over and over again.
No applauding in the room, please. Please be respectful to this diocese. No applauding in the room. Continue. Your time is up.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, Mr. Desai, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So you said that when you bought your lot, you had the full expectation that the lots across from you would not be developed? That's what you said?
Absolutely, yes.
And that was based on what?
That was based on the seller and the base on the city. We did our own homework. We went to the city planning, and they said, "No. There is no way on earth that this lot will be subdivided. They can't even put a six-by-six hut over there, or a treehouse over there."
But did they explain what they're basing that on?
The basis was the miscalculation by the prior developer and the tonnage and amount of dirt to be exported out of there. They made them sacrifice those lots and reshape the entire hill.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Sohrabian. I can't, I can't pronounce the first name.
Hamlet?
No, not, not Hamlet.
Sorry?
Okay.
Let's go to Helena Artunian, followed by Arlene Roche.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmen and women. I, my name is Helena Artunian. I am a resident at 130 Aspen Oak. I would like to address a couple of points. First, the Rimcrest property is way above Aspen Oak. The house that they're trying to build is going to disturb all the 13 properties that are on Aspen Oak. They have absolutely no disturbance on their property, on their street, anywhere around there. They're way up above us. So all, everything that's going to happen is going to be disturbing our 13 neighbors, which probably a good seven or nine are here today disputing this building. I live in Glendale. I work in Glendale. My husband works in Glendale. My kids go to Balboa. We walk to school on Wednesdays. We are supporting everything Glendale stands for. And we would like you to please consider what our neighbors are trying to tell you. There is, you know, this property is 2.2 acres. The actual, the, the land, the property is over 5,000 square feet. Huge, huge property, yes. You know, it sucks that greed is like in, in people's blood, I have to say, because there's absolutely no reason for them to split and build this. I'm Armenian, they're Armenian, and this is just inappropriate. I'm against it. I don't want, you know, I just want peace, quiet. And also addressing the fact that when we did buy the property, there's two sides to the property. One side of the properties, all 13, the 13 properties of Aspen Oak see the city. The other side of the property is the actual view of the, of land, just beauty. It's all nature. So when you're actually taking this away from us, it's really disturbing our peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene? Okay, if you keep, if you keep disturbing this meeting, I'm going to have you guys removed from the room. I don't want to do that. Please be respectful. Arlene Roche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to see you all in person. Hello, my name is Irene, and I live here in the north Glendale Hills, have done so for over 27 years. I'm here to speak in favor of the Planning Commission's decision regarding 2116 Rimcrest Drive. The hills in our neighborhood have already been cut and carved severely when that tract of homes was first built. One only needs stand to stand across the proposed home sites to see how steep those hills are and how beautiful they are, and I can't imagine how much they'd have to carve into that beautiful land to make room for those large homes. It's our understanding that parts of the land associated with this variance application were originally designated for open space. We'd be very supportive of it happening someday, as there are no parks in this area. My husband and I, and our family of six, walk on Rimcrest and Aspen Oak regularly. The home density in the area is already high enough, and those steep roads are already frequented by dangerous speeding drivers. Life on those roads is already tricky enough as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rick Barnes, followed by Fred Gaines. Fred is the last speaker from the, okay. Rick Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's wonderful to see all of you, and including the hard-working staff that we have. The reason I'm here tonight is very important to me, is that I notarized the original parcel map with Carl McGinn and Jack Ellis on this. So I was very involved with the original stuff on this years ago. And now, as I've raised my six children in this community, and going back to, they've finished school, and all of a sudden trying to find housing, there's no housing. And it's because so many people are so intent on their private little homes that they forget that our population is doubling, and so we have to find places. This spot is absolutely, on the parcel map, was houses originally. It was also then given to the city for a park to help compensate the development that was taking place. So in my mind, it's going back to what it was originally. But the other part is, try and find a home, and these homes will provide, move up... And these homes will provide, move up housing for people from our city, most, in most cases. And their homes will then become available. So when you're out there looking for a home and you can't find them for any of your children or your, in my mind, my children, what do we find? $900,000 two-bedroom homes. You find houses that are so small, so unacceptable, but because of the housing shortage. City Council punished those of us that wanted auxiliary dwelling units, even legalizing guest houses. You gotta move out of them to legalize them. So no matter what you do, it's been very difficult. And all it does is increase cost. Increase cost for our children and the people that are gonna be moving in here. We've gotta do something and we gotta start planning. And this is part of the future plan. You've got to plan where you're gonna build houses. And yes, it's gonna disturb all of us. My neighbor built an additional dwelling unit, got it legalized. Was I gonna fight it? I have to live with the same thing. They have a large family. It worked perfect. That's what I'm hoping for you guys. Please vote yes on 91A. Thank you.
So the last card that I have is Mr. Gaines, Fred Gaines, which is rebuttal time for the applicant, so five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers. My name is Fred Gaines with the Law Office of Gaines, Stacey, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Bonyadi. Thank you very much to staff and to everyone who's taken a lot of time.
Mr. Mayor, how much time would you like to? Five minutes, I think. Go ahead, continue.
Thank you very much to staff and everyone who's taken a lot of time to the council for taking the time to hear, to hear this case. I do wanna ask before I go further, there are a number of people here in support that did not put in cards but are here in support. If they'll stand up, raise their hands to show their support. Thank you. You heard that you have a discretionary matter in front of you, and you do, but it's not a legislative matter. This is a, you're in your adjudicative role, you're judges today. Your job is not, is, you have laws and you have facts, and your job is to put the facts to the law and determine what does the law allow you to do based on the facts of the case. It's not what I'd wanna do under any circumstance, that's what you have in front of you. It's exactly why your staff is recommending approval of this. Because if you take the laws of the city of Glendale and you apply it to the facts of this case, this parcel map, these two additional lots, meet every single requirement. Glendale has strict requirements. They have a lot of rules in Glendale. We're not talking about shoving these houses into little teeny spots. These are big lots. And every single rule, no exception, no variance, no deviation, is met, is met in this case. The compliance with the, with the design guidelines and this, these houses, the actual houses will go through your process as to, and be designed. They may, they may be, end up being smaller. They may end up being different than what you see. What we had to do is prove that the lots were developable with houses that did not require any variance or exception. And so that's what the architect drew. But that, you'll go through a process of the actual design. But when you talk about your hillside design guidelines, not regular design guidelines, just strictest guidelines in Glendale, the development is at the bottom of the hill, preserving the hillside and minimizing grading, the use of natural colors and texture, the retaining walls. You have strict rules as to how tall they can be, how many you can have. Every single one of those rules is complied with. We've, have revised this project over, over time. It wasn't mentioned in the timeline that in between the last application, this one, there was a lawsuit. We settled the lawsuit. It wasn't any money or anything. We said, can we shrink the project? Can we do some additional things and come back with a new application? We agreed to do that. And that's why we're in a second round of application with a smaller footprint, with resolved grading. We're talking about utilization of 10% of one lot and 8% of the other lot. Variation in massing, the driveways, the garages, three-car garages. So in terms of any impact on parking on the street, we're talking about three-car garages in each of these, each of these homes. And when you go through the list of, of all of the issues that you are to look at and determine whether the facts meet the law, zoning and lot size, access, noise, housing production, historic preservation, safety, recreation, open space, all of those issues have been analyzed and every rule and requirement has been met. So what have you heard in terms of opposition? I get it. You've looked, they've looked at the hillside. By the way, a hillside that they've blocked with Italian cypress because it's a manufactured hillside. It's not a natural hillside. It's got the drainage ditches going up the hill, but, and they've planted Italian cypress on it, so that's what they see when they look out because it's, at least the bottom of it's not all that great looking. But they, you're talking about, they don't wanna look out, out the front of their house. They have, they have the multimillion-dollar views out the back down the hill. They don't wanna look in the front and see anything that they haven't seen. That's not what the rules and the laws of the city of Glendale protect. They're concerned about construction. There will be construction. I'm sure that there'll be some annoyance at some point during construction of two homes. But the city of Glendale has rules and regulations as to hours and all the various operations, and construction ends. And you're not gonna, not approve projects in the city of Glendale because they have to be, they have to be constructed. The CCNRs are not before you. This is not the body that's gonna adjudicate the CCNRs. The CCNRs do not say that there can be no further subdivision. And what did happen between the 70s and 80s and now is that there was actually an action of the city council that's in your staff report in 1991 where the park went away. The city council took action. So someone who went in in the late 70s or 80s, say, what's gonna be across the street? They would've been told it's gonna be a park. In 1991, CD said it's not gonna be a park anymore, and the city zoned it for residential use, putting all of these rules into play so that someone, whether it be Mr. Bonyadi or someone else, could come in and say, if I meet these rules, then according to the Subdivision Map Act, if the facts meet those rules, it's to be approved. And that's why we ask you today to approve this project. We appreciate again all the time you've taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's the last speaker card that I have. We're going to take a three-minute recess and come back.
Part of the original subdivision, but beyond that.
It could've been either condition of the original subdivision or it could've been something that the parties agreed to later. I don't recall the circumstances of that. But again, as, as been noted, you just said that they are private covenants that the city can neither force nor use as a basis to approve or deny the project.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry. That's what I was going, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
The CCNR is among the residents? Does that impact our decision?
The private, the CCNRs are private covenants between private property owners and we are, they do not guide your decision and they, we can't use them to form a basis to approve or more likely deny the project if that was a consideration. And I think everybody's acknowledged that. That's, that would be if they are, and I, we haven't even looked at them and, I haven't looked at them in a long time. I think they may have been provided the last time we had this project, but that would be a private lawsuit between the parties if they do indeed prevent the development as has been suggested here tonight.
But it seems like the council's 2012 decision was at least in part based on the CCNRs. Was that just a misunderstanding of law or?
No, they were not.
They were not?
They were not.
And how about, there was this doctor came forward and said, CD told him that nobody can build anything in there. Is that, do you have any?
We have, and that was, I think that was where Councilman Sonani was going with his questioning, and we don't have any record that that occurred. And it wouldn't, you know, as we sit here today, that really can't inform our decision either. You have to look at the general plan, the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance to determine, and the hillside design guidelines to determine whether you believe the project is consistent with those, with those rules.
Are those the only things we can take into?
Has to be some, some basis within this, the policies within the general plan, the zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance that would form a basis to, give a basis to deny the project and to approve the project. Frankly, you have to find that it's consistent with those.
Questions for staff? Any more questions? I have, I have a couple of questions. Do you have more questions?
No.
Okay. Can you tell me what is the, because we know what the, I was told that the average lot size is 22,000 square feet in that area. Can you tell me what, do we have a record of what the lot coverage of those existing lots are? The FAR, the height of those, those existing properties? The houses in the neighborhood, do we have a, if you come up to the podium, please?
We don't have that information tonight.
So you, we know that the average lot size is 22,000 square feet in that area, but we don't have the records for the FAR, for the existing properties, the average FAR and the height of those properties?
Right. If, if I remember correctly, that what the code is asking is do you exceed the minimum lot, the average lot size? So we just looked at the lot size. Not FAR or anything else.
Okay. And when, when CD decided to turn this into R1R instead of a park, that area, is it just R1R or it was considered as an open space? Was not considered as an open space? Or was it considered as an open space? Did the city say this is not going to be a park, but is this going to be an open space?
Again, I'm, I'm not sure. And I'll, and I'll go back to something that, that we were talking about offline. There is no recorded covenant or any other prohibition from subdividing. So we're looking at what we know today.
Okay. And it was indicated with one of the speakers that there was a, there was something, something was approved in 1975? And I wanted to know what that is, if, if I may. Somebody mentioned that something was approved. 1974 was denied, and 1975, there was something approved in that area.
If I remember correctly, it might be that, it was Mr. Nelson. I think the, the sequel lawsuit was resolved and.
We're gonna have, I mean.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
In 1974, the tract was turned down. The Glendale City Council re, and this is all from your councilman.
I don't wanna read the whole thing. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna understand what was approved in 1975.
In 1975, tract 31888, the tentative map in a form with more lots was approved.
On this property?
On this property.
How many lots were approved?
Five more than the ultimate, I think 68. I could be one or two off. My point is that the original tract approval required for the sequa findings and to address the concerns of the people who objected to the tract as a whole, that the, among other things, that the grading would balance on site. The tentative map was approved on that basis. The reason you have parcel map 1355 in this parcel is that the developer claimed that they miscalculated and there were 240,000 cubic yards of export. So they had to go back in front of the city council. The city council looked to the city attorney to figure out alternatives that would not have. The city council looked to the city attorney to figure out alternatives that would not violate SEQA and we keep faith with the original conditions of approval for the tract.
Okay, so in 1975, there was a parcel map approved for five lots?
There was a tract map, 31888, tentative map, not the final map.
I understand. That's all I wanted to know.
Does everyone else understand?
Yeah, we do understand. Thank you very much.
All right.
And the last question, oh, not last question. The cypress trees, can you tell, do we know who planted those trees?
Come to the podium.
Record reflected, showed it out that the homeowners up there planted them. So I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the response.
The homeowners across the street planted trees on someone else's property?
Yeah, that's what was represented and we don't have any reason to doubt that.
Okay. And it's being irrigated right now?
That I don't know, but that's been represented as well in the testimony and I've just heard it again, that was the case. I think when the city decided that it would not be a park in 1991, that invited any number of actions from folks in the surrounding area, trying to preserve the hillside, trying to keep it green, trying to screen off what would hopefully never be developed.
So the cypress trees were planted and it's being irrigated by the homeowners on the view side basically right now?
So that's what was represented to us.
Okay, thank you. So the last question for staff. They provided this, let me see if I can find it. Yeah, this, this...
Section.
The section which is the view line, the line of sight from the potential property, if it's ever developed, looking down the hill. Have you, have you, have you seen this? Did you take a look at it?
No, we haven't. In fact, there's only copies enough for the council.
Okay. Can you provide a copy to, to the staff so while you're deliberating, why don't you take a look at it and, you know, tell us what you think about this document that was provided?
This is a pa, I'm sorry, mayor. This is apparently showing that from the new buildings, you can't look at...
No, I understand that, but I want the staff to take a look at it and make sure this is, I can't see what it is. It shows the view line from the potential development down to the street and to the properties below. I just want to make sure that staff takes a look at it and then give us your opinion later while we're deliberating. So, okay. Any more questions from staff or any more comments? Can we start the...
I have something from staff. Page 15, it says, it is staff's opinion that the project complies with the general plan, subdivision and zoning ordinance and hillside design guidelines. So if this complies with everything, then it's hard to, what I'm asking now.
What, what's, I'm sorry, what?
Page 15, on the very summary.
Yep.
It has been written, it is the staff's opinion, page 15 on top.
Got it.
It's staff opinion that the project complies with general plan, subdivision and zoning ordinances and hillside design guidelines. So if that's all it is to it, then it's hard to ask anything from anybody.
You know, staff makes, you know, I mean, they often say things that we often disagree with.
It is a recommendation and that's...
And they also in the report give five reasons for denying it.
To say, "If you want to deny." Doesn't say deny, but this says, this is what they, this is what they say they are recommending. It says in top, so it says, "If you want to deny, then few things."
Well, I think that's very clear. Staff is recommending approval. It's no secret.
But the way it has been written, there is nothing left here to discuss.
Well, I think within...
If it was like that, if it was like that...
Okay, let me go to Mr. Najarian to start.
After conferring with the city attorney, I feel it's appropriate to exercise my prerogative to go last.
Okay.
Or later.
Okay. Please, please.
One of the council's last questions, you don't follow the answer entirely wrong and you're about to make a motion, make an action without...
Okay. So I'm gonna ask you to not to have this one-way conversation from that side. So this is the last one, please do not, the public, you had your chance, you spoke.
If I can, Mr. Mayor...
Yes, Mr. Sinani.
I'd like to ask what the misapprehension is or misconception or misunderstanding is.
Okay. Come up. If the council has a question from the gentleman...
No stone unturned.
I don't want to go for another 10 minutes.
Yeah, but not too long.
Reading documents from 1975, so just...
How about a document from 1979? When this tract was finally, this parcel map was approved.
No, just tell us what was misrepresented here.
We were told that the fill slope, I heard somebody say, "Well, you know, the neighbors planted cypress trees." You mean people across the street went on somebody else's property and planted property? No. Here is from the city council meeting of 5:1579 where they finally let this grading go forward. "The entire fill slope, speaking of this property, shall be heavily landscaped, including an approved hydromulch mixture, plentiful trees and shrubs, minimum size of 15 gallons. The slope will be irrigated with automatic irrigation system. The fill slope will be maintained continuously by the developer for at least two years with a cash bond and thereafter, the landscaping, the irrigation, the drainage and that pitch of slope will be maintained by the homeowner of that huge lot." That is what was here and I'll leave this for...
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, we would, we would state that what my response and I think the staff's response is basically a reflection of what was being presented to us, but I don't know that any of that necessarily has any bearing on any of the discussion you have today. So we certainly appreciate the clarification. I don't know that that necessarily informs what you are being asked with this decision tonight.
Okay. Let me, let me ask the million-dollar question. Who wants to go first?
Ladies first.
Okay, all right, I'll go first. I don't think he better go first. Yes, right. I'll consider this going second, okay? That was a, well, you know, I, I just want to say that I visited this site several times just to make sure of that I understood the location. I read all the reports. I even did some real digging into hillside guidelines. I know that property owners have their rights to develop and I also know that neighbors have a right. But what we have to do as a council, I think, is to find the balance where we can, we can make a decision that, that works for the better, the betterment of both. I'm not going to take into consideration, and I haven't taken into consideration, the CCNRs or the promises or any of that. What I have to consider is, are the findings that were presented by staff, approvals and denials, and also the design of the two houses that were presented by the appellant. Now, I've heard comments like, "Well, the design, we're not here to consider the design." However, because it's conceptual, except I heard a 10-minute dissertation on the conceptual design and then the appellant came up and said, "Well, when I designed these homes." So I'm thinking, are we here to look at the design or not? Well, I'm going to. I know we're, I'm going to because it has, it is a part, and that was why I asked the city attorney. Does the ordinance say that council shall use hillside design guidelines in making decisions in changing parcel maps? So, staff made findings for approval and denial in their report. They state in the report that there are indications that the findings for denial can be made and they actually made five of them. I'm going to, I'm going to concentrate on one of them. Counsel, it was also stated in the report, the counsel may deny this project based on consideration of the hillside design guidelines. So the evidence, and it's my job, my job as, and maybe I'm taking something out of the attorney's books that were, I have to weigh the evidence that we have that supports a denial or an approval. The evidence I have supporting my conclusion is, first one is on page nine and it's in the staff report and it says that all subdivisions must specifically conform to the hillside design guidelines. On page 10, the staff report states, well, these projects, these proposed homes generally, generally follow the slope of their respective lots. Generally is kind of a word I don't like to apply to guidelines or ordinances that we are trying to apply. And it's not necessarily the walls that have to comply with the contour of the slope, it's the house, not the, not the wall as far as I'm concerned. On page 24, and this is where I'm hanging my hat, page 24, the hillside design guidelines. Number one, that the developer must consider the topography. The profile of the house shall reflect the topography. It is imperative to follow the topography and it should diminish the visual impact of the mass and scale of the house. I looked and I found the, let's see, the hillside design guidelines and you can't see these, but it, the interpretation is that if you're going to build on a hillside, you have to kind of place the house into the hillside, no can of levers or nothing, so that you don't project or so that the public cannot see a straight wall. That was this, the right way and the wrong way. According to these plans and what is the word you're using, conceptual as they are, this is not according to the hillside design. If you look at the plans on 2.3 and 3.3 of the plans, you will see that the east and west elevations are straight up and down. So when you drive up that hill, as soon as you come to the bend, you're going to see this huge house. So you went from a two, you went from two two-story homes to two three-story homes. And in my humble opinion, you created two behemoths. I mean, two homes with mass and scale incompatible with the two-story, on the street level that is, on Aspen Oak. I think you've created a real negative visual impact on the neighborhood and based on the weight of that evidence, I can easily make the denial finding number four clearly. The hillside development review policy is on page 14. I think that's, this is definite proof that I am going to be voting to sustain the planning commission decision.
Okay. Mr. Najarian, would you like to exercise your right now and go second or you want to go third?
First, I'd like to compliment Ms. Devine for being brave enough to go first. And for, for thorough discussion on some of the issues that she felt was pertinent. And to a large extent, I adopt some of those, those concerns. I've, you know, if you're on the council long enough, you know, you go around the cycle and I was around, I wasn't even a young council member when this came around last and I was one of the staunch supporters of this. And I, at that point, I felt strongly that the homeowner should be able to, to go forward and to construct, to subdivide and eventually construct these two homes. There was a lot of community opposition at that point. I know that shortly thereafter, the homeowner filed a lawsuit against the city to, for a writ, to try and compel us to go forward in an attempt to, you know, seek a negotiated agreement and to try and get a second shot at this. As attorney, Mr. Gaines stated, they did dismiss the lawsuit and the idea was that they would come back again. They would present a less impactful plan, less grading, and the idea was that the neighbors perhaps would have a little more assurance on the development that's going to occur. But, you know, unfortunately, as we, as we've heard, there's, it's still as controversial a project as it was back in 2012. Since 2012, there's been an exceptional amount of development in Glendale. And my concerns and my beliefs and statements to everyone that asked me about the developments are that we wanted to focus the growth downtown and we were going to protect our existing neighborhoods. And I said that time and time again. And I didn't say it just because it sounded good and it was an excuse for the development that was going on downtown, but because I felt that that's, that's the way we were going to continue developing in Glendale. It's not a question of can these lots be developed? As, as Mr. Nelson said, of course you can. And as any engineer worth his salt could say, "Oh, it's no sweat developing these lots." But the question is, should they be developed? And at this point, I have to reverse my position that I had five years ago and, you know, and state that I don't think two lots should be developed. If there was one lot, I think there was a, you know, there's a possibility to do something different with the architecture that would make it less impactful on the visual properties, on the surrounding homes, that it would be more in line with the guidelines of the hillside ordinance. This is a tough, really, this is a tough one. I have close friends on both sides of this issue. I was glad this was over five years ago. I was not happy that it came back again. This is the type of thing where you lose, you know, you never end up making, your friends are fleeting, but your enemies are permanent. And I'm very sorry, I know that the Bonnattis have waited a long time for this and they've done almost everything that the city has asked, but I just can't support the development, the lot split at this time, and I would affirm the planning, planning commission's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Sinani?
I'd like to wait for, hear my colleague.
You already said?
What did he say?
I read it.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll go next, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a tough one. I think I got elected and one of the issues that was upon us, but was never really made it to council was this dispute between a prominent member of the community and neighbors over the development of this lot. And it's, you never want to be in this situation to have to sort of arbitrate or make a decision. But I guess this is part of our burden and we have to do it from time to time. And I have to say that I do share the sentiments of council member Paul Devine. I also concentrated on the hillside design guidelines and didn't find that what's being proposed is in compliance with it, to the guidelines. I also have, I'm also not certain that what's being proposed is consistent with the general specific plans. While the, I think the planning commission had reasoning, you know, their reasoning for the denial, and I'm not sure I entirely agree with them, but I do agree with some of their findings. So that's my, that's my conclusion.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I, one way or another, this is a very tough decision for both sides, I understand, but I have this feeling, this will come back again. Somehow, this is going to go to court, and will come back again here. I was going, apparently now it's not going to pass, but I was going to offer kind of a compromise, and that would be if they would bring the buildings as close as to the street and would make it two-story building rather than three, which is more imposing. So, however, my recommendation still is that if you bring the buildings closer to the street, it's not going to be imposing on the other side, because the other side, they are, like, as you can see, three levels, and I was there this morning, I reviewed, I mean, I went back and forth to understand what's going on here. So, as I said, if the buildings, if, would come to the point that would, would be approved, if you bring the buildings, as I said, I'm repeating myself, the buildings should come very close to the streets, so it will be less of a, you know, dirt moving and excavation or whatever, and retaining wall will be smaller, much smaller. And then, rather than have three levels, you make it two levels, it's not going to bother the other side if they accept that there will be a building the other side of the street. If they don't want to see anything, so obviously, whatever you do is no good. So still, my offer is that bring the buildings closer, two levels, and they can live together. Otherwise, this case will come back. We will review it again and again, as has been in court before.
Well, I mean, I don't know if it comes back again and again, if, to the extent that you're, you're saying that somehow the developer will take this to court, to get, you know, to approve their right to develop.
Right.
This, this thing may go back and forth between the court and, and us a couple times, because even, even assuming something happens, there's a favorable outcome for one side or the other, it's still the private right of action under the CCNRs. So, I, I hope both parties think really hard and long about some kind of a, a long-term resolution to the whole thing, because...
Well, and they've already, they've already moved it twice, haven't they? Didn't they move this one, and then if you have them move it again? I mean, I don't think that's the way to solve the problem, to move the houses.
Yeah, I don't see that.
The other issue, which I was going to ask, to make the square footage less, those were three issues which I was going to suggest, to make it two levels closer to the street and lower square footage, but however, that's my opinion.
Can you, can we put back that this view that was part of the presentation? Yeah, that's, that's good.
I don't know that we have that on our slide.
No, that's, that's fine. This is fine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Well, I think this is one of those unfortunate situations that no matter how you vote for this project, half the room is happy, the other half is really unhappy. So, I'm just going to make a few comments based on the evidence that I have here, based on the report that I have, and vote with my conscience. First of all, the size of the houses, I'm very familiar with this area, these are humongous houses on Aspen Oak. They're all large, they're all three stories. If you walk into those houses, every time you walk in, you go one floor up, you go one floor down, so these are all three stories, and this will show, hopefully, the size of those houses. And the lots are not very big, the flat areas are very, very small, and they were all graded to develop this area. They were all graded, and it's thousands of cubic yards of dirt were removed from this area to develop this area. But this is one of the, the best and highest-class areas that we have. And personally, I know we, we kind of downzone most of our neighborhoods to build downtown, but I think we don't want to lose that, that track of houses or areas that can accommodate larger homes, because some people, as you can see, many of the neighbors here that I see so many friends in the, in the, and this is a tough situation, because I have friends on both sides, and they all live in this area. And because the houses are large, because they were graded the way they were, they were graded, because they have a beautiful view, you can get a laser pointer and point to every building in Glendale, if you live on the, on Aspen Oak side. So, for me, if you make this house two-story, one-story, the neighbors wouldn't want it. I don't think a half a story house will, will fly with anybody. It's just because they lived there for a long time, with that side of the hill being undeveloped, and that's what they're used to. This is what, what this is all about. It's not about the house of the size, it's not about the Hillside Guidelines, Design Guidelines. These houses are designed with the, complying with the Hillside Design Guidelines. These houses are buildable houses. But this is not the final design, they have to go through the process. If they get this subdivision done, and they cannot comply with the Design Guidelines or Hillside Design Guidelines or Design Review Board, they're not going to build this thing. If the, the, they have to remove more dirt than is allowed, they're not going to be able to build these things. So, to me, it's not about the size of the house, or the design of the house, or caring about the Design Guidelines. And these houses are not very elevated from the street, I think they, they start from, like, 12 feet from the street, so they're not really up high. If those houses were built all, all the way up on that hillside, and they would look down into neighbors' yards, I would understand, but look at the viewpoint from their second story, when they even look down, they see the, the roof line, there's no way we can see the backyards. And plus, all of these homes are looking into everybody else's backyards in Glendale, because they have such a beautiful view, which is a, which is a great thing. I mean, we live on a hillside, this is how it is. So, the reason I was asking for the floor ratios or the height of the buildings, you could see, you know, I want to point that out to my fellow council members, that these houses are a lot taller than 30 feet. They are probably 45 to 50 feet tall, the ones that they have pitch roof. So, it's not about, again, 30 feet, two-story with, with a pitch roof is 30 feet. They're building a three-story with a pitch roof.
However, Mr. Mayor, you're talking about the ones across the street on Aspen?
Yes.
But you can't, but you can't, I was going to say, because you, from the other
side, you can't, they aren't that big. The, they are just two, just two stories, they're on Aspen.
Right.
You don't see that, that huge mass on Aspen.
You see the huge mass, it's a two-story mass, and it's taller than, than, if it's not 30 feet, it's pretty damn close. On Aspen Oak, the existing houses that are two-story with a, with a pitch roof, but, you know, that's, but on the other side, the neighbors down, down below, they look at, look up, and they see all these houses on the hillside. And the other neighbor from across the street is like a shoehorn, you can see all of them, which is not a bad thing, we live, all of these neighbors, they're looking in each other's yards. It's not that the privacy issue that, they all look at each, in each other's yard. So, I think this is very unfortunate, that this has to go back and forth, and I think it's going to end up in courts, and the court is going to decide, but I got to tell you that when this subdivision was built, they, they removed, I'm afraid of asking this gentleman to come back, because he's going to read the, the things from 1972, but there's so many, so much, so many thousands of cubic feet of yard, dirt was removed to build this subdivision. City of LA was mentioned here, the McMansion, please not, let's not even compare the two cities, and City of LA has no jurisdiction in Glendale. This, this council decides what's, what's, what's going on in, in our city. And there are no variances filed, it's all complying to the code. It is the largest, it will be the largest lots in that area, they're all 22,000 square foot average, this is going to be 30,000 square feet each. It's a private property, and we really look at the rest of the city, that how many properties were subdivided to build townhouses, how many properties were subdivided to build apartment buildings, how many properties were subdivided to, to build, you know, single-family homes. They were subdivided, and they, they were subdivided in the last 20 years, and that's, that's, that's how it is. It's a, it's, it's property rights. So, with that, I want to, I just want to mention that, based on the documents that I have and all the information and reports that I have from the staff, I don't see any reason denying this, this project, because these houses are not intrusive, they made it flat, they made it three-story, so the, the removal of the dirt is less, they will remove less, less cubic yards of dirt. If they do two-story, it's going to be flat again, therefore, they will remove more, more dirt. So, with that, I would be in support of this subdivision, but I know that the votes are not there, but I just wanted to voice my opinion and why I would support it, because it would not affect that, that entire subdivision at all. So, and the one of, one other reason that I wanted to show this map was, if you look at the, the Aspen Oak side, on the right-hand side view side, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, no, there are 10 properties facing these three lots. I mean, three lots on one side, if this is ever subdivided, these three lots are facing 10 properties. So imagine how small are these other lots compared to the two that is being proposed tonight. So, that's all I have, so if there is a more comments or motion, we are...
I'll move the agenda item, motion sustaining Planning Division Commission decision denying the tentative parcel map number GLN.
Well, I'll, I'll second it, but I do want to say I appreciate the analysis of the mayor and Mr. Nagarian, but I, I'm not going to be able to change my position on it. So I'll second, second 982.
Pro call, please, close the hearing. Close the hearing. I'll close the public hearing now, so no more cards.
Now, you have to say no, then.
No, yes, you have to say no.
Denying continued for rest of prepared findings.
You will say yes.
Councilmember Nagarian?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
No. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We really like this public engagement, so, next, next item, please.
Next item is oral communication.
And please quiet down, because we still have a meeting to conduct.
Discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda, speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may respond or question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The manager may refer the matter to the appropriate Department of Investigation and Report.
Okay. One card, Ardash Nazari. Why don't we give him a chance to... Please take your conversation outside.
Mr. Mayor, what was the name of the game?
Ardash Nazari.
Ardash Nazari.
Mr. Nazari?
Let's go. Quiet in the room, please.
The person isn't here, let's go.
We don't believe Mr. Nazari is here.
Last call for Mr. Nazari. Okay. What's next, Mr. City?
A motion to adjourn in memory of Hagop Baldasarian, I believe you want to...
Yes, yes, I do have. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Just want to read a portion of the bio, because this gentleman has accomplished so much in his life, if I wanted to read the whole thing, we would be here for, for another few hours. Hagop Baldasarian was born in Tehran, Iran, on March 30th, 1948. He attended Kushesh Armenian School in Tehran until the age of 15, when his father, Petros, unexpectedly died from a heart attack. Hagop cut short his educational aspirations to tend to his father's paint supply business. He maintains his father's reputation as a fair and honest entrepreneur and was sought out by young Armenians arriving in Tehran looking for work. In 1973, Hagop married Hilda Woskanian, and later had two sons, Peter and Gebik. In 1979, leaving behind the turmoil of the Iranian Revolution, Hagop and his family immigrated to the United States. In Los Angeles, Hagop followed his entrepreneurial inclination and opened the first of several restaurants particularly named Mas's Kabbab in Glendale. For over five decades, Hagop had worked tirelessly to make his business successful. His motivation's always been providing for his family, and well, as well as contributing to his community to the best of his ability. I think he was the first tenant in Glendale Galleria, if I'm not mistaken. The three central tenants in Hagop Baldasarian's life were family-abiding faith and commitment to Armenian-American community. It was through his, oh, I thought you were asking me a question. It was through his devout adherence to these principles that he earned the love and esteem of his community. His greatest joy, besides helping those in need, was spending time with his family, mainly his five grandchildren. Hagop is survived by his wife, Hilda, his two sons, Gebik and Peter, his granddaughters-in-law, Paula and Ruby, and his five grandchildren, Anthony, John, Michael, George, and Jack. His legacy lives on forever through them, and he was a true American success story. So, with that...
If you let me add, Mr. Mayor, Hagop has started with one restaurant in Glendale Galleria in 1980s, I guess. At the time of his passing, he had 10 restaurants in, all in different malls. It was in Arcadia, it was in Valley, a few of them in Montebello and other places, but however, he had 10 restaurants. And he was a very good person, every year at the minimum, he would donate $500,000 to $1 million dollars to different nonprofit organizations. He was a very generous man.
Thank you. I'll, I'll add, just that he also raised two very fine sons, one of which was my law school classmate, and, and was a grandfather to five beautiful grandchildren, very devoted to his family, very devoted to his community, loved Glendale, great loss for everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, I was partners with Hagop on a, a business project, and although he was a good businessman, a great businessman, he didn't care about money, if that makes, if that makes sense. He devoted much of his time to the Armenian Educational Foundation and to building homes in Armenia, I believe in Gumbri for earthquake victims, and as of just a few months ago, he was there, also in Artsakh, in Khairapah, doing his charitable work. So his, his passing will be more than I, I thank you for bringing his memory to the attention.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Your motion to adjourn in Hagop Baldasarian's memory?
Is there a...
Motion to adjourn in the memory of Hagop Baldasarian.
Okay. Second. Thank you, Mr. Najarian.